This is the only thing on the jet. Okay. You got one bigger.
Yeah.
You got one bigger.
(laughing).
Glad you could join us, Eric.
Okay. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to an end except for dropping down. Do we have any minutes or reports?
We do. We have the Cap Region's March 2015 things and the March 2015 quarter deeds piece filed.
Missionary Committee Liaison Reports, announcements of upcoming meetings and events.
What's that deal tomorrow?
Tomorrow is the County Day of National Service and we're doing that at the Special Learning Center at 9:00 a.m. And I think Julie's already scheduled to be there and we're gonna present a proclamation and read some books to some of the kids.
Special Learning Center?
Yeah, Special Learning Center out on Fairgrounds.
Got an address?
No. Put it GPS, it's out on Fairgrounds Road.
That's a nonpartisan court proposal thing is tonight at Sheriff's.
Yeah, 6:00 p.m.
No, it's at 7:30.
Seven, oh, Carolyn gave me the wrong time.
For sure, it's at 7:30. That's what I got.
Okay, I'll check.
Mary, double check that.
We got the ready listening tour Wednesday. We got a meeting Thursday, HBA Wednesday, we got admin meeting Thursday too, so a lot of meetings this week.
I got your beat. I got CAP Region's Executive Board meeting, 7:30 Wednesday.
That don't count because you said that several times.
United Way at 8:30, the Co-County Chiefs meetings Thursday night, 6:00 p.m. at JCPD Meeting Room.
Have you been to one of those yet?
Yep, I have.
It's pretty interesting.
Yeah.
They pick on each other a lot.
Fridays, East Side Renegades. I think we're doing Warren.
Well, it's Friday, yeah.
Yeah.
I got KWS Friday.
Yeah. You wanna do it this time?
Probably could.
Okay.
I want you to check and make sure.
Okay.
8:30?
Yeah, 8:30.
And then I had discovered Jefferson City Foundation event in Millbottom.
Yeah, which would really be neat.
Thursday.
Yeah.
Six.
Saturday, I get to speak to the Marine Corps League. They're having their convention here at their breakfast. So I get to go speak to them. Saturday nights, the YMCA's Black and White Ball.
And then did we move next week's agenda to on Tuesday till 11?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So do we have that RBC meeting at the Chamber? Is that right?
Yep. It's gonna be busy.
Just a couple weeks, yeah.
Yep. Ah, unfinished business.
This is the only business on the agenda.
Yep. New business, discussion of Stadium Christie and Monroe Cooperative Project.
Okay, the project was bid about two weeks ago, Evertake. Sam Gaines Construction Incorporated was the low bidder and David and Matt from the city are here to discuss this. They would recommend award to the city council or recommend that the city council award the project Sam Gaines Construction with the cooperative project. The other party has to basically give a concurrence to award that and so they're here to talk about the project and answer any questions you might have. And I guess the maybe the one, the bigger issue is it did come in over the estimate quite a bit, but we do have funding in our budget to account for that for this year. And then also Matt has put together kind of a flow chart of the cooperative project funding and how everything would fit in, so that's part of the discussion too. So I'll turn it over to Matt.
Do they have copy?
Yeah, they have.
We got some extras that we brought extra.
Did you email that?
We got extras here.
Or attached to the, to the agenda? Okay.
We got a paper copy, so.
I want paper, yeah.
And maybe I start off just real quick explaining the sheet and then David could maybe fill in on the project itself if you'd like.
Sure.
Is that all right with you guys?
I'm just mainly concerned about the money.
Yeah.
Part of this project, I think we.
Red, green sheet. It's kind of a summary and we typically have done this on our bigger projects, kinda summarize where we're at and make sure we can still move forward with some comfort that we can get the project done and what other, our other commitments are in the city-county projects. And so if you look at the top, we said MSP related projects and the far right column is the combined city-county money. And if you total it down, it's 11 million, so five and a half million each. And the MSP category, everything in green is basically either been done or it's under encumbered through the Lafayette Interchange Project. And so what we had talked about is a future project on Capitol Avenue that would tie MSP kind of to downtown and kind of round that category out. So once we did the totals, we basically had 761,000 left to get to that $4 million there. Then you go to the next one, Old Town Streetscape Projects. We've been working with the Old Town Group and there was combined $600,000 for each entity, or excuse me, 300 each for a total of six, working on Old Town related projects. And so just last week, I met with some representatives of Old Town, Phil Freeman, Ron Medine, who else was it? Jim Crabtree, and just kinda got their take on that. We've talked about a lot of different things of Old Town projects and really they settled, that group anyway settled, said they would like us to see it combined with that other Capitol Avenue funding and do a better project there. And so that's why I kinda put it out in red. Now, we haven't scoped that project or anything, but just kinda lining money out for Capitol Avenue to upgrade that between there and MSP. And that was good with those, that group of Old Town folks. Then you go now to the next one, that's where we're talking about now, this particular project. What, we've done what's in green or we're about to do what's in green. And when you look at the, those projects in green there under the Stadium Interchange area, the traffic study, that was the initial thing, that's our 20%. Of course, we use STP money, so it did cost more than that, but that's, that's the 20% that came from the city-county funds. The Stadium Monroe Christie is what we're talking about today. Now, that's the total of the construction contract that we have today, plus right-of-way design and all those things lumped into there. That's what that total project cost will be. Then the next phase, Stadium Jefferson, the other side of the interchange, that's our 20% of our design fee that's underway now on the other side. And so that leaves in city-county money, if you look at the estimate in red there on the west side of the interchange, David's looked at that. We got a estimate from the consultant for the construction, I think it was around 2.1-ish. The right-of-way, another in design and whatnot, 300,000. So if you look at that, but we also have STP money from the state for that. So that's where we say about 2.4 minus that 500 STP, need about 1.9 million. So that would round that project out and get that interchange done. Go down to the next line, Frog Hollow Road and Bridges, that's the project we've completed, included all the traffic studies that we've done out there and everything. 1.5 is what we ended up spending on that project, so that's all done. And then we have some contingency and I just jotted in Capitol Avenue, 'cause that's kind of a, once we get past the Stadium Interchange, that's probably our next big project we'd work on together if everybody's in agreement. And so that would also be our contingency fund, that 573,000. So if something were to go bad on the project, we're talking about approving, that would, we'd get our contingency there. Or what if something, the estimate was off or whatever, we decided to add some scope to it or something? I think we've had some informal conversation with Chris about that. You know, we could supplement out of our contingency fund. And so, you know, we don't wanna go into any of these big projects without having a backup plan if some contingency, 'cause you know, you open these up, there's always some risk involved in a big project like this, as everybody knows. So that would be our contingency fund and that would round out our 11 million. So that's why, once we, when we go to do these big contracts, we always like to update this and kinda look where we're at. But if, David, you might talk about some specific, unless you got any questions about the sheet, I can answer them, you know. We put it together together, so.
I mean, otherwise, I mean, looking, you know, I think Eric had mentioned that the, you know, the project had come in a little bit more than the estimate. You know, if you look, there's about six items within that estimate that, you know, really account for the majority of the overrun. And Sammy, you know, we just talked just before the meeting that, you know, one of that items is kind of a big ticket item is the subgrade stabilization. You know, we've gotten ourselves in situations in the past on some of our projects where we didn't have that number, you know, in there or enough quantity in there. And so it, you know, had come back with change orders at the end. And so certainly with this project, we, you know, have what we believe to be enough quantity in there to cover any possibility. And so, you know, that number is high and the number is, you know, slightly higher on a unit cost basis than what we had seen in the past and kind of across the board. And some of the other items, you know, there's some increases in all those and, you know, trying to sort out why, you know, why that might be, I think part of it could be attributable to the, you know, the construction timeframe that we have available to us on the project, you know, between the, you know, trying to get access back to the school and certainly access to the hospital and the time that we had agreed to have that for them. You know, that might have driven those prices up slightly due to the need for potentially some overtime and/or otherwise by the contractor. And then too, I mean, we've, you know, this, you know, just last year, we lost JCI, who's been a company that's been giving us very competitive bids over the last three or four years. You know, so without that, without that company, you know, perhaps some of those numbers. That's kind of what we're looking at there with.
The two low bids were so close though.
Right, the two low bids between Sam Gaines and Don Schnieders, I mean, there, I think there was $20,000 worth of difference on a $2 million job, so that's, that's really pretty close in terms of, you know, thinking that we had, you know, some good numbers there from those contractors.
So I guess at this point, we would just need the county commission to give concurrence to the city to award this contract to Sam Gaines Construction, so. Is there any other questions that y'all might have for us or the city? As far as our budget goes, accounting for the extra, we do have a cooperative project reserve in our budget, way more than enough money to cover what we did. We had 990,000 budgeted and our share is gonna be half of the 2.3, so about another. But then we, I don't think we reimbursed you for right-of-way costs and design stuff. So I mean, the total project cost, we're gonna be, we'll be able to take a little bit out of that reserve, not more than, any more than 200,000. So that's if everything goes well. We do have, in the, we have 895,000 in reserve. In that line.
Everything goes well.
Everything never goes well on a construction project. Are you just trying to get along or what?
No, I've been.
Well, my concern isn't necessarily the overage on this one, it's, it's where the next one's gonna be and, I mean, this one's at almost 2.4 and it looks like the total project for Jefferson was 2.4. Is that right?
Correct.
And so our portion is 1.9 less, I guess MODOT's picking up some of that or the STP funds are picking up some of that, so where are we gonna end up on, on the Jefferson side? 'Cause it, in my mind, it's a much bigger project.
Well, I would, I would say that, you know, we're just getting started in design. We know where the costs are, we've got updated numbers, so that's Paul's job to make sure, you know, we, telling the budget here. Now, on the other hand, we wanna make sure we get all the amenities in there that the community expects. And so, meaning turn lanes, things like that, when I say amenities, necessities probably instead of amenities. But the, but you know, as we go through this, Paul and hopefully CNPS would be, and George Butler together would be updating the numbers based on some of these more recent bids. And then, you know, tell us before we bid, do we need to come down here and actually look at some of this contingency? 'Cause yeah, we don't wanna bid a project, we don't have the money or you guys had in your budget to award. So yeah, so between now and I guess late fall is when we're expecting that to come together.
And I think, you know, the fact that it was bid out in March, I think had a big, a big impact on it. People had their, had their workload figured out for this year already and, I mean, look at, looking at some of the unit prices, even off of projects that we bid in, you know, in less than the last year, I mean, everything was high. Nobody was working hard to get this. So I think the time of year it was bid had a big, a big impact on the reason things were high.
So, I mean, one of my thoughts was, did we, did we screw up that whole area for two construction seasons or would we be best to do it all in one construction season, meaning both Stadium and Monroe? I know that puts this project off a little bit, but anyway, it's, you know, when you start talking about traffic and everything else and people avoiding the area, you know, are those businesses that are there gonna be better off if it's just in one construction season versus two? And, and if it's a bigger project, do we get, do we get better numbers for both sides?
I, I can chime in first. Well, I, you know, this particular project obviously is gonna disrupt traffic, but a lot of what's on Stadium is widening and then we'll wedge in and overlay, so a lot of the work is on Monroe Street that's really tearing up the road next to the hospital. 'Cause that's basically a complete new street, especially time we rip it up with utilities and everything that are relocating through there. So I mean, that, you know, it will have traffic impact, there's no doubt, but the, but, you know, when you're doing a $2 million project, as far as what we typically do and I think you guys too, that's a pretty good sized project for us and for these particular contractors that are bidding. I mean, we typically always get good numbers out of Sam Gaines and even Don Schnieders and, and, you know, as far as workload, you know, perhaps maybe that affected it, but when you have those bids so close together, we did hear from one of the contractors, he was a little worried about the timing, you know, it's a, it's a short timeframe, so that's kinda pinched him down. They may have to pay a little overtime, things like that to get this done, avoid some of the school headaches, so you get that, both sides of that going, that's gonna be, I think it would be, I think it's best to do it this way. We wrestled with that for a long time, do we save up and do one bigger project and just the traffic impacts.
Boy, if you did a one, did a one, I mean, you've got two Quick Shops, you've got that Jiffy, you've got two car dealers, they'd basically be out of business.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is not gonna, I mean, it's gonna affect them.
It's gonna, it's gonna affect them, but at least one way, I mean, they're gonna be able to access them.
Yeah, this summer.
If you did them both at once.
They can come in.
I think that whole stretch, you'd, you'd just basically shut them down.
And you got access to the hospital.
You're gonna shut them down one summer or another.
Well, but they'll still have access from one direction.
How quick do you think we can get this next one bid, can we bid sooner or later here? Are we tied, are our hands tied a little bit with the federal funding? Yeah. Well, it would just really be a matter of, you know, when we would get to the point where we could have right-of-way documents done, you know, certainly. And that's another issue with, with the projects. Essentially, the way that the federal funding works, you know, we've, basically Monroe Street isn't a categorized street and so there couldn't be any federal funding that could be spent on that street. And so in some ways, we divided the project up into a portion that we could spend the federal funds on and a portion that we wouldn't be allowed to spend the federal funds on. And so in some ways, that kind of drove part of the decision, you know, to split them up. And so trying to combine them, even if we were to do it differently, we'd still have to keep the project separate because of the federal funding and the way that the right-of-way was purchased and, and, you know, various and secondary other aspects to that. So that kinda makes it a little bit more difficult. But in terms of the timing of the next one, you know, certainly it is just dependent on, you know, when we could get the right-of-way plans and then begin, you know, 'cause then there's a, you know, the acquisition of that right-of-way, you know, from the MODOT standpoint, there's a certain timeframe for all those things, so. And then, but we've been talking, you know, certainly with the Canips who own the car lot, and I think the Trinity Lutheran folks are aware of the project. And so I think the, you know, the two main folks that'll be impacted by the project are aware that it's happening and where it is coming. So hopefully that will increase the possibility of getting those right-of-ways acquired timely, you know, and then you can move into the final design relatively quickly after that. So the hope would be that we would have it available and ready for bid, you know, sooner, maybe January as opposed to, you know, March.
If you could slide right from this job into the next, then, you know, it's more or less one continued project, just a little gap between.
Right, but it's certainly not going to be pleasant, you know, especially, you know, the George Butler, I think, has, you know, had some experience in constructing, you know, roundabouts and the phasing of those over in Kansas City where they were maintaining traffic through the intersection while they're building it. But it, yeah, it's gonna be hard to make that happen and have it such that people would still feel comfortable coming there just to go to Jiffy Lube rather than going to a different Jiffy Lube.
Is a timeframe for the Jefferson round, are they gonna try to do that again after school's out, the way we're doing?
The way that work.
The way we're doing Stadium and Monroe so that, 'cause, boy, you got those school kids, that adds a heck of a lot of traffic.
Right, there's a number of retaining walls that are gonna need to be built, you know, into, into what was McKay Buick. Certainly that's gonna be a wall that's gonna be holding the road up. And then the most likely need to be a retaining wall over in Trinity Lutheran to, you know, to hold the bank up. And so, you know, certainly those things are off the main pavement as it stands today and so we're imagining that, you know, if we get that contract going early, you know, that's the work can be taking place without really impacting the traffic on the roadway. So we kinda get a jump on it, but certainly before we would start interrupting the traffic, we would certainly hope that it's summertime and school's out, so.
I know it puts us in a tight timeframe, but, I mean, I just feel like all these contractors are booking their workload early fall. I mean, they're bidding MODOT jobs and they're bidding a lot of these things in September and October and so come January or March or whatever it is, they're already, they're loaded. I mean, if the work's out there and so, you know, we just, I realize it becomes a tight timeframe for us, but, you know, I think we gotta start thinking about bidding these things earlier than, than later, but especially, you know, these, these tight projects where it is a tight timeframe, right in the peak of the season. And, I mean, that's a, that's a hard project for somebody to really, to do unless it just hits them just right and that hardly ever happens, so.
Well, and that's, and this is just our own internal thinking and these guys, you know, I haven't run into this by them, but, you know, especially with the federal funding and all the MODOT requirements, you know, like David said, trying to hit a January bid time could potentially be tight depending on how much cooperation you get. It may be something just to kinda stew about a little bit instead of rushing and rushing and trying to jam something into January and possibly having high bids, you know, it may be worth even holding off until the, later the next summer.
So is that when you were planning on bidding this Stadium Jefferson, is January?
Right now.
Okay.
If they can get it done.
Yeah.
Well, and we have some commitments there too. The federal funding has to be obligated in, I think by April of 16. And so now granted, you can probably get some sort of extension, but I mean, the way it was laid out, that money had to be obligated by then. And I guess the other, the other thought that we've discussed, you know, in terms of, well, do we stretch this out? I suppose you could, but ultimately the traffic study that we did and the, the results of that that we are anticipating are based on the fact that both sides of the intersection are done. So the year that we have, we're imagining the year that we have between these projects, the traffic through there is not going to improve any and probably will be perceived to be worse. And so I don't know that we want to drag this out over a longer period of time and get beat up because, well, you spent all this money and the traffic is no better. You know, so I think that's something else, just perception wise, that we probably need to think about a little bit.
I'm okay with doing both. I mean, I just, I mean, you know, if we approve this one and we're over, no telling what the construction costs are gonna end up at. My concern is going forward with the design for Jefferson and that construction cost becomes a lot higher and then we can't afford to do it. And so.
I think that's where we go back to our contingency. We've got our 573 anyway.
Well, even, even with the contingency, I mean, I'm not sure that.
There could be additional STP monies that we could acquire at that time, you know, but again, you know, going through the design, that's why we hired our good designers and hopefully they understand the budget well and.
Yeah, but.
Paul's sitting here, we can meet on him, he's not the out-of-town consultant, I would prefer to be him.
You just, you know, you just never know how it's gonna fit that contractor though. I mean, you can plug those numbers all day long and, and you see abnormalities just because of the workload, you know? Nobody wants it that bad 'cause they're all got plenty of work and so, and they understand the risk of, and the timeframe and, you know, all that becomes pretty tough, so.
This year's been kind of an odd year of bidding. My tenures with the county, this is kind of the strangest one, just with JCI leaving and.
Yeah.
The local contractors seem to have work.
Elsewhere.
Kinda lined up, like Stockton, for example, they were tied up through June, so we couldn't even get them to put in a good bid on, on our side of the job. Just, you know, strange things like that that isn't normal. And I know you guys had, did you have the, the whole road square yardage figured for the subgrade stabilization?
On Monroe Street.
On Monroe Street, so the whole width, so.
Yeah.
And then what about Stadium?
There's no stabilization, you mean, all the widening is gonna be on new fill?
New fill, so you wait, yeah, that'd be on that.
And then all the existing pavements, mill and overlay, wedging.
So really, that item should not overrun, if anything might not.
No, that's, Jim West is saying.
But I can't remember if Chris was on the commission, but I know Jeff was when we did our McCarty project, we had the change order, maybe you were, Chris. You know, we talked about, we tried to cut it pretty close and tried to really get down to what we thought. Of course, you never know till you open it up, but, you know, we had a big change order on subgrade stabilization. So we kinda took the tact after that, hey, let's put it all in and then we'll get a negative change order on that stabilization, we hope, if it comes out in our favor or we'll just even up, you know, because, so I think that's what we've asked CNPS here to do. And I think every, a lot of people realize there's a lot of rock right there, it's probably not gonna be what, maybe, may not be what is necessary to do the job. But again, you don't really know, 'cause we didn't even have to do a bunch of test holes or any of that kinda thing, but we're watching utilities go in and traction rock and, you know, there's places.
Yeah, we found, as the water company has gone through there, you know, they found rock over a stretch of about, oh, 300 feet long, kind of right in the area of Case Avenue. But then once they crossed through Case, they've been back just digging in dirt since then, so there could be, you know, that stretch through there that, you know, we find something a little more solid. But the other thing that's, that's interesting, the sidewalk through there was built with a whole slew of trench drains through it. So we're imagining, although I've not actually been out there to watch it, but we're imagining that that hillside must weep, you know, so that's not a never, that's not necessarily a good sign in terms of subgrade on a road, you know, if you have water weeping out of the hillside underneath a road, that generally leads you to have some poor soils under there, so, so we'll have to see.
Jeff's awful quiet, that's.
Why is he quiet?
Is he asleep or what?
Hold on, let me get back to, I just had some, of course, what's our, we're just throwing all kinds of numbers out and we got these in front of us, what's our bottom number that we gotta come up with from county? 200, you said? Is that right?
This year it would be, we already have 990,000 in our budget, we would have to take out of the 895 reserve of, just some rough rig figuring, probably less than 200. It'd be like 150,000, so we'll have plenty of reserve to put towards next year, plus additional money from next year. Budget-wise on our end, I don't see it being, it's just a more, it's more the overall budget of the various projects and making sure we can cover everything. You know, I think the Capitol Avenue project has quite a bit of money in that for.
Oh, that was another thing, yeah, I didn't mention. I guess on Capitol, like I said, it was the next kind of, once we get the other side of the interchange knocked out, we still haven't got a designer on Capitol or we haven't even really scoped it to a great degree. And so, you know, we're anticipating finishing up this other side. And that's why I say this contingency at 600 makes me feel pretty good about this project, you know, having that contingency. you know, having that contingency. It could be used for Capital, we could reduce the scope of Capital and do something different there, if, if things were to not bid well or something like that, so, so that's a, you know, kind of as we get to the end of these sales taxes, we often have done this, that we say, okay, we, we've really committed to do some old town projects, we're focused on Capital, but, you know, everyone would like that to be as nice as it can be, but again, you have to look at the budget available, so, so as we're coming to that last year of the sales tax, you know, we wanna, we'd be finishing up with this other project and we kind of know our limits on Capital, so, you know, we have a lot of money reserved for that, but yet we could, we could change the scope of that if, if need be. I don't, I don't really see it going there, but if, you know, if it happens, it.
But if we pull the two hundred from our budget contingency or reserve, we'd still have the six hundred for potentially Capital Avenue, the one side, and then the contingency, potentially the other Capital Avenue project, or if we don't, then you all can pull it from that contingency, all your eleven million. Right now, we're basically gonna be eleven million, two hundred thousand.
Yeah, the reason I think you're saying contingency is what, what we do, just a matter of getting these done, is I think, Eric, is that, you know, we're out buying right-of-way and we just use a hundred percent of our money, so we kind of, on a construction contract, they kind of, you guys kind of reimburse us at that time, so in other words, you come out at fifty-fifty in the end, and so instead of just keep trading checks back and forth every time we do a little something, you know, we'll spend ahead and we're keeping track of it, and then, like on that contract, it's, let's say it's just two million even, but if we've already spent two hundred thousand on a right-of-way, for example, then, then we don't, we don't split a million, million, you know, we get credit for our two hundred, you see what I'm saying? So that's when Eric, I think, says, well, he's pulling out a contingency, but you're still in that four point three number there. Gets a little confusing, but we.
No, I understand what you're saying.
Four point three or?
For that whole project with the estimate there.
We've built into our budget the past couple of years a reserve in the cooperative project line item, just to be able to have cash flow at the end of each, towards the end of the sales tax as we do some of these projects, make sure we got enough accounting for to cover that and not totally, you know, limit us on other projects that we can do. So that's why we have this reserve in there, just to, just to carry it forward to the next year, rather than put it in a contingency and have a huge contingency that, you know, technically you can take, you can draw out of the other stuff, we wanted it to be in this line item, and so that's, that's where that eight hundred ninety-five thousand is. Our actual line item for this specific project is nine hundred ninety thousand, okay? Their project, the half, is nine hundred seventy-three thousand, so out of our budget this year for this project, we can actually fund our half. The thing is, though, it's the paying back for the right-of-way and the design expenses, and that's where the additional hundred fifty thousand give or take comes from, that's where the overage is. Another thing to point out, the bid price on this project was two million fifty-three thousand, the actual roadway items are one, one million nine hundred forty-seven thousand, so over a hundred thousand less than the total bid price, the rest of that's for sewer stuff, it's not figured.
Our sewer fund will be paying those costs, so.
Now you've confused me, Eric. Okay, five point five million is what we've committed to sales tax, that's half of the eleven million. Of that five point five, you're saying there's, there's a reserve in that five point five?
No.
Okay, so when you're talking about contingency, you're talking about another nine hundred thousand dollars on top of the five point five?
We don't have any contingency beyond the five point five, that's the most that we'll spend.
Well, we did, we just, we.
So how are we gonna pay the additional hundred fifty on this project?
We have a reserve in the cooperative project line item in the budget to cover additional, we'll just take out of money we would spend next year, it's just pushing to next year, it's, it's just a placeholder in the budget.
Right.
To carry the money more or less forward into the next year or cover anything that needs to be covered this year.
What we're trying, what we were doing is, we're putting that money into the line item, Chris, just so at the end of the five years of the sales tax, we have the money there to complete our obligations.
I'm looking at something here that you guys don't have, and this is actually the budget here, you can see there, that's the fifty-four nine oh seven.
Right.
There's the Capital Region projects, that's this one here, that's nine hundred ninety thousand. Eight hundred ninety-five is that cooperative project reserve, it's just sitting in our budget.
That's to carry forward from, from the last sales tax?
No, it's from this sales tax, it's just.
Just money we haven't spent.
Money we haven't spent.
But was it, was it, was it budgeted for the thoroughfares or is it from other projects or that's what I'm getting at?
We, we haven't been, when it's all said and done, this, this dollar amount here would be part of the five point five.
So instead of.
Instead.
It's still five point five million or is it five point seven million if we pulled the two?
Five point five is all we'll spend out of the sales tax.
Okay.
Yeah, five point five.
It's a cash flow.
Okay.
At the time, I think I got it understood.
It's cash flow.
Yeah, we just, we just have.
I think I see now.
So.
I was scared as.
Okay, so we're gonna spend a hundred and fifty of that eight ninety-five that we have left, that's, that's our half, right?
We'll have seven hundred and fifty thousand, give or take.
For.
Going forward to next year.
For next year.
Plus additional money of next year's.
Right, right.
Total funding that we would put towards the same fifty-four nine oh seven to cover the additional projects.
So in the years where they didn't spend this much, they kept putting it into that line and carrying it forward, so they're accumulating the five point five over the five years.
Right.
Whether they spend the whole amount they accumulate in a given year that comes in or not, they're carrying it forward, so they have enough to pay for the projects when you get to the end of the cycle.
What happened in the previous sales tax, Lafayette and McCarty Street, those projects got done towards the end of that sales tax. We didn't budget, we didn't, we did all our projects for the most part early on, and then we were sitting there the last year or two years of that sales tax with nothing to do. I mean, we did have projects to do, but, you know, in order to keep our staff continuously working on projects and not be overloaded one year and not, and have nothing the next, we tried to keep money set aside for this to where it wouldn't mess up the rest of our project, you know, let's take the forecast, just trying, trying to maintain a good cash flow to keep the rest of our projects going.
So eight hundred ninety-five is our portion of basically a reserve in the five point five million, I mean, do you guys have a reserve in your portion of that eleven million total, too?
Oh, yeah, we have a cash flow, I mean, it's a cash flow issue, and so what, in our deal, you know, there's, in our sales tax, it's roughly, let's say, twenty-five million dollars, and eleven, you know, five point five of that is coming to these city county projects, we have stormwater money, we have transit money, we have airport money, and so one of the things that he and I do is that within the public works category, because there's other departments, too, we have, I think it's almost fifteen million just in public works that we're cash flowing, so as I get an airport project you have nothing to do with, I've got a cash flow in ahead and maybe take, reduce the cash flow, say transit, because they don't have a project, and I'm constantly doing, David is doing it now, I used to do it, David's doing it now, but we're constantly doing this to make sure that when we get to the end, we have our eleven million that we said we would, or the five point five, excuse me, that we said we'd combine with you guys, so.
So I guess my question is, is that anticipating that Jefferson is gonna go over budget?
Right, and that's what.
Over what we budgeted currently?
And this sheet doesn't have anything to do with cash flow, it's just splitting up that money, and so if I didn't have this, this number at the bottom where it said contingency, I'd be nervous, but I do, you know, or we do. And so that's when I talked to Larry and Eric, you know, and David got together, we said, okay, let's, let's re-tally everything, make sure we can make, fulfill our commitments, and there might well be, we get down here, maybe we don't even spend that yet, and so we come up with another project off, you know, that we can spend it on, and so we round out our eleven million, so, so really the cash flow is one aspect of it, this is just kind of keeping the running tally of what we're doing, it's not based on any particular year or anything like that, this is just showing how we're spending the eleven million dollars together. And so if I didn't have this number at the bottom, I think we'd all be a little nervous, right? And then, so that's maybe what, you know, we saw the number come in a little high, if we, you know, and that's something that, you know, from our level, if we budget to the nth degree and can make all these commitments, you know, that's probably not going to work out very well for anybody, but, so we try to, we try to be fairly conservative and so on something, some things like this will happen all the time, I mean, it does, and so as long as we can commit, fulfill those commitments and then, you know, work, work within that eleven million, I think we're good, and so, so, yeah, I feel really good about moving forward with the projects, knowing that we have that contingency in our eleven million still. And we have built, we have built some contingency into the bid this time, you know, with, like you said, on McCarty, we didn't have as much soil stabilization, this one, we've built a lot of that into it just because of the issues that happened in the past, so.
Five seventy-three just doesn't seem like enough, but, I mean, if we're, we're over on this one, I'd say we're gonna be over, maybe double on the next one, and I think you're gonna be cutting it close, so, I mean, if it's. But anyway, I mean, I don't, I don't get where we're getting five seventy-three, because you're saying we got seven fifty.
Those two numbers don't coincide.
Well, that's the problem that I have, is the numbers don't work.
That's, that's his contingency within his cash flow, I'm trying to explain it for you, I'm sorry, but we have the same thing in our cash flow, we, we develop a contingency within our cash flow, but this is just programming of projects.
This sheet is totally different than what we have that we're giving them, so today you're not asking us for more money.
No, no, sir. We're just asking for it to be. Your half of that bid, because I'm gonna want to go to the council tonight and ask them to approve it in one meeting so we can get this project underway.
At the end of the day, we're still giving y'all eleven, or five and a half million.
Five point five.
It hasn't changed that.
It hasn't changed.
Basically, y'all could go ahead with the project and go, we got your five and a half million, we just want your blessing, right? Or do you need some cash flow?
We need your half of it.
We don't have the whole.
Gotcha, yeah, but essentially, you're gonna go ahead and go with it.
Because I don't have that much cash flow.
They're gonna do this half of it, they're gonna do this half, and then we'll have to reevaluate the other half, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd be having a similar meeting probably.
Yeah, but you gotta take them as they come, this is.
But you do one side, you can't afford the other side, you're gonna look pretty stupid.
Oh, but you still gotta, you still gotta take them as they come.
I can, I'm confident that we'll, we'll be able to put a project together to get the other side done, I mean, especially with our reserve and, and our designers know our situation ahead of time, so they're just getting started, so, yeah, I mean, we can, we can definitely fulfill the other side, I mean, we'll have to buy right-of-way, I mean, that's always an issue, but, I mean, if it becomes unreasonable, then it's a court proceeding and all of that, and we don't like to do that, but, you know, but it may take longer in that respect, or we get to the end of these designs and we're not, we can see our timeframe isn't going to hit when we needed to do, oh, yeah, we may have to delay it here, just right there, I mean, that's kind of, we try to, I think, Paul's point's a good one, but from our standpoint, we try to keep pushing these ahead, otherwise if we keep saying, well, we'll do it next year, then it just gets delayed, you know, it keeps getting delayed, so we kind of push, 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 and then if we're down to when we can't do the, hit the summertime or something like that to avoid the schools, yeah, we'll, we'll pull back and say, okay, we may have to bank this one a year, and even though we got everything done, the right-of-way bought, we may have to bank it a year and bid next year or something like that, so, otherwise you end up at the end of your sales tax and you do, you got a lot of money in the bank, but maybe some designs on the shelf, but then we gotta go back to the voters and explain what we did with the money.
Does it look like?
What do you think, Mr. Presiding Commissioner?
I think we need to just keep, we need to move ahead, we, it's.
You think there's gonna be a trend in the bids being higher than engineers?
I trust Larry and Eric.
Shouldn't be.
Run into this in a while.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, admittedly, I'm guessing that there's probably a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand in my estimate that was probably too low, you know, based on looking at it a second time, you know, so the subgrade stabilization itself was probably a hundred thousand lower than it needed to be, there were probably maybe a couple other miscellaneous things in there, but, I mean, it was just, like I said, between JCI not being there to bid at the time of year and those type of things, I think, that's just what we ran into.
And, and just so you guys get a comfort level, maybe you don't realize, but Da, I know David's group here keeps a very close track on all our bid items, and then we, once a year, we, we re-estimate those based on all of our projects, whether stormwater, because there's stormwater things in this project, there's sewer in this, so we do that, kind of keep a running bid tab of what we should expect the cost to be, and so, you know, we've had a lot of really reasonable JCI bids in that, in those items, and so, you know, with them going out of business, well, we were probably getting some artificially low estimates in projects done, to be quite frank, because they're not, no longer in business giving us those good numbers, and so we have a big sewer project over here on Lafayette that had to be done by the bond company right now, so, you know, so, yeah, we'll, we need to be looking at that and, and truing these numbers up, so.
I think if Larry and Eric are comfortable with it, I mean, I'm, you're, you're the, I think we need to, we need to move ahead.
I'd recommend moving ahead, you know, there's some discussion about combining all that, which is very valid, but there's a commitment to Capital Region to get this done this year, and it's probably in everybody's best interest just to move forward with this and reevaluate the next phase, and that, you know, could turn into, you know, pushing that another year if things don't schedule out right, and you got the, somewhat unknown factor with the federal funding and the additional requirements to go with that, so there, you know, I think we just need to move forward with this and make it go ahead and, as far as on our end, budget-wise, you know, we'll be fine.
Well, that's.
What?
I'm waiting for a motion.
Emotions? I've had those removed. So what do we need a motion for, y'all just need a blessing?
You just need a blessing?
Need concurrence, it's just.
I can't remember the exact wording, but I think you vote concur, or concur with the city's award of this project, Sam Gaines' construction.
Was that on the bill or something?
The bill, that's the city's.
Right, I mean, I didn't bring a copy of the, the agreement.
Send this money, I guess, Eric's what they typically do, I can't remember.
Need a contract, I think.
Right, I think the agreement just basically said that, you know, the city would have, would come and request concurrence, you know, of the, of the construction contract, so, don't remember the exact wording, but it's.
So when our accountant asks your accountant for the money, they'll send them the check, and we award the.
Dr. Cresta, she's in a good mood that day.
Whatever she needs to make that happen.
So if we approve the award, then they can give us a contract and then we can approve the contract?
Don't think there's a contract, there was an agreement, a capital, a cooperative project agreement that had already been agreed to for this project.
Correct, yeah.
I can't remember exactly when, right?
It was about a year ago.
Yeah, that's already been done, it's just the way the process has worked in the past, once a project is bid, the other, by one party, the other party gives concurrence to, or agree, basically, just agrees.
Right, so there wouldn't, this would be the last step, ultimately, then the count, the council would approve it, we, we hope this evening, and they would be the ones that signed the contract.
So how do you want that worded, that we'll make a motion that we concur with the city in awarding?
The construction contract.
The construction contract to Sam Gaines', all right, so moved.
So we don't need a contract to pay the bills?
We already have an agreement with the city, and the contract will be with the city, so our agreement is with the city to pay our half of their contract, so their contract is with Sam Gaines', and our agreement with them that we've already signed says that we will pay half of their contract.
And the agreement states in it that the other party will agree.
Right, right.
Prior to win the contract.
Right.
Prior to war. So this is one.
So what was your motion?
That we concur with the city to contract with Sam Gaines' construction.
Get that one?
I might want to go to the original recording and listen to how we had that worded, I had some help from David on that, but so.
That's on the Stadium, Christie and Monroe project.
Yes.
Yeah, Stadium Monroe, Christie Improvements.
Should you be voting on this?
No, I'm not, I'm gonna abstain, that's why I'm gonna do a roll call.
You don't have to.
I think I will.
There's a state law that says you don't have to, even if you're on a board.
I know, but I think I will.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Sam?
I'm gonna abstain.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Hey, I thought, here we go, we're gonna be.
Do we have any other issues to come?
I wanted to say something, I went down to the train station over the weekend, brought the kids down there and walked around a little bit, that was a very nice, congratulations to the guys for doing that, I think you turned out a little good, but it's, it's a good entryway into the city.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Do we get some STP money for that, too, or we had something? Thank you. Did we get some STP money for that, too? Or we had something through Campo, didn't we?
That was a, that was a transportation enhancement grant. Yeah, so they paid for eighty percent of that project.
I don't, there's STPs, DEAP.
Right, the STP is the, the suballocated money and so that just comes to Campo or comes through Campo, the Campo area to Jefferson City and however Campo decides to lock that money. And then there was the TE, Transportation Enhancement Grants, which are competitive grants. But now they've taken that nomenclature's gone out the window and they've returned. And now it's TAP, Transportation Alternative Programs Grants.
TAP?
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of the new way forward with the highway bills, so.
Any other business? Motion to recess till four thirty?
So I moved.
I was looking second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're in recess.
Oh, this.
Huh?